Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, I will be praying for this nation. And that we all keep our elected officials and our leadership in prayer. Go with me in prayer. Father God, I just thank you so much for this evening that you have blessed us. And Father God, we come here to make decisions for the city of Newman. I pray, Father God, that you have a clear, we each and every one of us have a clear mind to make the decisions for this city. And may it be a tremendous blessing that we hindered this evening in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Here.
Councilmember McDonald.
Here.
Mayor Proten Ball. And Mayor Grimm.
Here. I am number five. Declarations of conflicts of interest there and there need tonight. Not seen any tonight. Ceremonial matters. Proclamation, Golden Valley Healthcare Center 50th anniversary. Would like somebody like to come up?
He'll go to the microphone over there.
We have Juana and Melinda. Good evening.
Good evening.
Whereas Golden Valley Health Centers began serving the Central Valley and the city of Merced in 1972. And Golden Valley Health Centers team of doctors, dentists, behavioral health counselors, and medical professionals and their teams are committed to providing quality health care services, regardless of language, financial, and cultural barriers. Golden Valley Health Centers is a federally qualified healthcare center that provides medical, dental, behavioral health, and specialties to over 150,000 patients in Merced, Stanislaus, and San Joaquin Counties at their 45 locations. Golden Valley Health Centers provides a variety of vital services to local residents at their Newman Health Center located at 637 Merced Street. Golden Valley Health Centers has been certified as an advocacy center of excellence by the National Association of Health Centers, which is a community health center that creates a culture of advocacy to ensure the policymakers at all levels of governments commit to investing in affordable, equitable, and initiative care that health centers provide. And Golden Valley Centers is celebrating their 50th anniversary in 2022. I, Casey Graham, Mayor, on behalf of City Newman Council, present this proclamation congratulating Golden Valley Centers on their 50th anniversary. There's that. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for your service to the community. It means a lot. If anybody would like to say anything.
Well, I do want to say, really appreciate this. It means a lot. And the city of Newman, the clinic, the location that we have here, that one means even more because it was the residents here, the city, the people here who really support it, jumped in and supported, provided for us to have that service, that location here. And so it means a whole lot, and I really appreciate and thank you all. I'm the chief officer, operations officer, and excuse me for stumbling. I've only been in this title for three weeks, but I've been with Golden Valley Health Center 35 years of these 50 years. And so Golden Valley has, I've had my first experience going out serving patients, you know, at the migrant camps. And it just meant so much. It made me realize that the mission of Golden Valley Health Center matches the mission that I have. You know, I'm a preacher's kid, and we've always learned to serve, you know, one another and to serve people. You know, they're not here to serve you. You're here to serve. And so that's how I see Golden Valley Health Center. It meant a lot to me. That's why I'm still here 35 years later, is because of the mission that we have and our vision values. So again, I really appreciate all the support that we receive and the services that we provide. I'm glad that we're able to provide it here in the city of Newman. Thank you.
Thank you for your services.
Congratulations, and thank you, guys, for being part of our community.
I like to, I like to say, too, is that Golden Valley has been, you know, a tremendous impact for the West Side. We don't have an emergency center. And your center down there has really been a service for, you know, especially this, the West Side. And we really appreciate you all. Thank you so much for your service.
Yes.
Thank you.
You guys, congratulations.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Next, we have a proclamation for Society of Disabilities for their 75th anniversary. And we have Kathy and John. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right. Whereas in 1947, the words disabled or handicapped were seldom used in reference to people and would have been considered extremely peculiar. The amputee, the stroke victim, or the polio patient were considered crippled. And it was in this era, 75 years ago, in a small California farm town, that a group of people organized to help the crippled. They saw people suffering with the after effects of polio and other disabling conditions, many of whom could not afford all the medical care that might improve their conditions. With humble beginnings, they set out to provide medical equipment, physical therapy, doctor consultations, and eventually even vocational rehabilitation. At that time, there were no federal health plans and no notable government programs to meet these needs. That is why caring local citizens took action. And that small farm town was Modesto. And that little local organization was Society for Crippled Children and Adults. In 1965, Medicare was established to provide medical care for persons with disabilities. Society responded by adapting their loan closet program to bridge the gaps in the Medicare system, providing medical equipment, loans, and no charge to the patients. The society has gone through several name revisions. And aside from brief affiliation with local chapter of the Easter Seals Society, has remained an independent, local-supported organization. Today, the society operates the largest medical equipment loan closet in Stanislaus County, provides educational and recreational programs, job training services, a special needs fund, and resources to, and referral services to more than 50,000 residents in Stanislaus County living with disabilities. I, Casey Graham, Mayor, on behalf of the Newman City Council, present this proclamation congratulating the Society of Disabilities for the 75th anniversary and offer our appreciation for its dedication to enhancing the quality of life with, for people with disabilities in our community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Casey Graham.
John's gonna take the picture.
Everything's social media, right?
Would you like me to take one so you can both be in?
Sure. That'd be great. Oh, you do?
Oh, you do? Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's important not only to recognize our anniversary, but also to recognize the services we provide as we feel that a lot of people, especially on the West Side, do not know about us. So I would appreciate it if you would all spread the word. And I'm going to ask our friends at Golden Valley to refer people to us because we do have one of the largest medical loan closets in, between San Francisco, Sacramento, and Fresno, actually. So when someone is permanently or temporarily disabled from a surgery or an injury, we can help make the lives of them and their caregivers easier by providing equipment that will make transporting and basic home care easier. We've also been able to start up our programs again after the lull of COVID. And we've had our Big Day on the Farm event for people with disabilities, as well as our adapted water skiing is now in progress again. And if you have not seen a smile from a disabled person when they are able to engage in a sport by themselves, all alone, and independent, you have not seen a bright smile like that. I'd like to thank my board vice chair, John Anderson, for coming with me. If you have anything to add, feel free.
The only thing I would say is that the society is an organization that, as was stated by the mayor, that doesn't receive any funding from any governmental organization. So it's locally supported and continues to be locally supported to fill a need that's fairly substantial. The programs that are available post-COVID condition are fairly exhaustive. We have a water ski program. We have a bike camp coming up. We have a snow ski program during the winter. There's lots of activities that we're involved with. We have Miracle League that we, we manage and participate in. So all kinds of activities for the disabled folks. So we're very fortunate to have Kathy as our executive director. We have a very active board of directors. And we're always looking for providing those services to other members of this community, which is not only Stanislaus County, because we provide services to folks in San Joaquin, Merced, and even up in the foothills. So far-reaching service opportunities, non-government sponsored, all local dollars. And we're here to provide that service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Real quick, before I walk all the way back and there's a lull, I'd just like to say thank you, guys. Again, I know many people have used your services and people with disabilities, giving them a chance to be normal is, does bring a big smile to their face and relieves a lot of stress in their life and makes them feel, you know, normal again. It's huge.
The parents have a bigger smile on their face than the participant because it's a huge lift for them to give that everyday care. And so to see their child or, you know, they're not always children, but to see their descendant enjoying that activity is just really, it's almost as rewarding to watch the parent as it is to watch the participant.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Item number seven, items from the public, non-agenda items. All right, we'll move on to item number eight. Consent calendar. A, waive all readings of ordinance and resolution except by title. B, approval of warrants. C, approval of minutes of the June 20, 2022 special meeting. D, authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with George Osner, AICP, for contract planning services.
I moved that we adopt the consent calendar for this meeting.
I second.
We have first and a second. Go ahead and vote. Motion carries three zero with one absent. Item number nine, public hearings. There are none tonight. Item number 10, regular business. Adopt resolution 2022, next number. A resolution approving the calculation of the maximum garbage collection rates per prior contractual agreement. Lou, good evening.
Evening, Mayor. Members of the Newman City Council. Normally, this resolution is brought to you in April every other year. But this year, because we were working with SB 1383, which would have required us to negotiate new agreements with Bertolotti because of the changes that 1383 was causing, we put it on hold. But now that 1383 is on hold, we need to continue with our existing agreement with Bertolotti. According to that, just kind of bringing up speed, Bertolotti is the one that actually sets the garbage rates. However, in our agreement with them, we have a maximum calculation that requires them to keep the rates below that level. This calculation in years past has actually brought the rates down. In this particular year, it's going up because it's based on changes in the Consumer Price Index and the cost to dump refuse out at the fingered landfill. So this basically is not approving the rates. It's just approving that the calculations are correct and that we're in accordance with them. And then, once this is over, we send the notice to Bertolotti, and they'll notify us as to what rates they will charge. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I move.
Thank you, Lou.
I move to approve resolution number 2022. A resolution approving the calculation of the maximum garbage collection rates per prior contractual agreement.
We have a first.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Go ahead and vote. Motion carries three zero with one absent. Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
I'm number 10B. Adopt resolution 2022. Next number, a resolution authorizing the execution of a master property tax revenue agreement between the city of Newman and the city of Stanislaus.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take this one. This one is with great honor. I get to finally present this item. So as you know, I've been city manager here since '06. I've worked with three different county CEOs, Rick Robinson, Stan Ryson, and now Jody Hayes. And we've always worked, tried to work towards getting the city a better and more equitable share of our property taxes. We finally have made some progress. And tonight, before you, we come with an agreement that we think will have long-term positive fiscal impacts on our community. Property tax in California is a very convoluted process. So much so, there's no tech company that will do a software program to calculate property taxes because it's so convoluted. And so, and you know how tech companies are. If they can sell you something, they will. But they can, they can't create one. So because it's all based back in, starting in 1978 with the passage of Proposition 13, which kind of set the maximum amount that you could raise property taxes. Following up with that, AB 8 was passed in by the legislature in 1979. Together, they created how the methodology for property tax was calculated and how it would be distributed to all the cities, counties, special districts, schools, community colleges, universities, and all the like. Currently, the way AB 8 is established and is, is not consistent throughout California. Stanislaus County, right now, under AB 8, receives about 12% of the total property tax. The cities in Stanislaus County average about 5.7%. If we were just to move our county one, county, pick up our city and move it south to Merced County or north to San Joaquin County, we would get a larger share of that. So it's very interesting how that works. With that, state law also allows, the Cortezi-Knox Act allows for a, the counties to, and cities to enter into master property tax agreements. In 1996 was the last time one was done. And if you look at, like, the lead up to it, the cities were getting ready to annex land, all of them, not just Newman and the county, kind of put their thumb on it because they knew they could block the annexation. So they negotiated an agreement that, that was heavily favored towards the county, such so that the county kept 100% of the base tax, or whatever that tax was at that particular time when it was annexed. They keep all of that property tax. And then, as valuations went up, property taxes increased, as you know. And then the county took 70% of that and left the cities with 30%. So, you know, on average, the city of Newman gets about nine cents on the dollar. So if you think about that, if you're paying a $2,000 tax bill, the city of Newman is getting $180 to provide police, fire, and all the like. So we've, again, we've worked as a small group. There was myself, city manager from Oakdale, Riverbank, and Modesto. We worked with the county CEO and went through a bunch of renditions. What was very helpful was when we did the Northwest Newman Master Plan. We hired an outside consultant to look at property taxes to see what the fiscal impact of annexing and then would be on our city. And we ran it, and Lou and I ran it under the scenario of, okay, what if it's on a 70-30 basis where the county keeps 70? And then we ran it on a 50-50 basis. When we got to the 50-50, boy, it changed everything. We were, we were right there at breaking even. So property taxes is a zero-sum game, meaning there's not more. You know, you only have a fixed amount. So that's where we started, Stanislaus County. We start below everybody else, so we have less of a pie to share. And that, that creates some, some issues. But with that being said, we worked with the county CEO. And now I'm happy to say we have a property tax agreement that I am happy to bring forward to you. And it does a lot of different things. One, it kind of goes backwards in the sense that when we first started this negotiation, it was all for future annexations. But we've been able to change that. So the current fiscal year we're in that ends on Thursday, right? We start a new fiscal year on Friday, July 1st. Starting with that year, all the property tax generation is, once the increase goes up, we get 50% of that increase. So this year's a base year. If it goes up next year, we get 50% of that going forward. And that's for all the lands that had been annexed into the city after 1996. So all the houses in Hartstone and all the houses in Sherman Ranch and...
Lucas Ranch.
Not Lucas. Lucas was before that. They were, they were built after 1986, but they were annexed before. But some of those other ones over there, so Stevens Ranch. What that means is if someone's held their house for a long time and then they just sold, or they're going to sell next year, we're going to start getting an increased valuation. We're going to start getting some ups on that. So, so that's good. We get to go backwards in terms of what the land is, and we're moving forward. We're going to get a bigger share of the pie. The county does continue to retain the base, which we understand. Like, I wouldn't want anyone to get, jump into our revenue stream and take a big chunk out of what we already have because then you have to cut your budget. So that, we understood that was going forward. But again, the big thing going forward is we're going to be splitting this 50-50 on, and it's on the, on the, on the county side as well. So what does that mean? It's hard to quantify it because even our city, we have different tax rate areas. And so, how many tax rate areas do we have? About 30? 40. So we have 40 different tax rate areas, and each one's a little bit different. So it's hard to tell you exactly what, how this fiscal benefit is going to be. But on a countywide basis, if you took a million dollars worth of valuation, that would generate about $10,000 worth of property taxes. Under the old formula, the cities in Stanislaus County would average about $953 out of that $10,000. Going forward, the cities are going to get about $1,388. So when you add the valuation, that's a million dollars. Our, I think our valuation is about $500 million. For our city, our valuation is about $500 million. So $500 million times $400, you know, starts, starts, 500 times four. Anyway, it starts, it starts adding up over a period of time. So these decisions that you're making today, is it going to have an immediate impact on our budget? No. It'd be a small impact going forward. But your predecessors that are going to sit there a decade from now, or two decades from now, are really going to benefit from this. When we start to see Northwest Newman and the business park and that commercial develop over there and a 50-50 share, that's going to generate more, more revenue for us. What does that mean? It means more police officers. It means fire, fire equipment. That means recreational programs. That means programs for our seniors. All the programs that we provide our residents now, we're going to have a better share to start with, to start providing those residents to you. So, so with that being said, I'm, I'm pleased to present this master property tax agreement with Stanislaus County. And that is our recommendation that you adopt the resolution that would allow me to execute that agreement and move forward. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Well, I'd like to say thank you. I know I'm in my eighth year here, I think. And I know this has been a topic since I got here on council, that this has been a topic. And it's been, you know, something we've been moving toward for, for a long time. So I appreciate your, all your hard work on this and getting this completed. And, you know, hopefully, this does bring us the ability to hire, you know, as we grow additional officers and fire, expand our fire and that. And, you know, it's, it's kind of amazing how, how little we get to run those resources and, and maintain the city and how well we do with that. And that's a credit to everybody on the staff. So, any questions?
Yeah. So, helping to understand, so with this, what is the impact in reference to residents? Does that mean the negotiation that you have with the county versus Newman, trying to get its slice of the pie a little bit bigger, does that mean that basically we're looking at a tax rate?
No. So everyone in Newman, your property taxes did not go up one cent. It's just a matter of how we take what you're already paying and divvy it up.
Right.
So there are no tax increases with this. It's just a matter of now, instead of keeping nine cents on the dollar in our community, we get to keep 13 cents on the dollar in our community. So what does it mean to our residents? That means more of your local, more of your property taxes that you're paying stay in Newman as opposed to going over to Modesto or to the county.
Okay. I just wanted that understanding. And, and saying that, I think it's, it's really great that you stepped out in reference to negotiating. Because had you had not stepped out to negotiate with the, with the county, then it's business as usual. And we would not get no cut. And I seen that happening, and gosh, we've been down there 17 years now. And when I first moved down here, I seen where small cities like Newman and Patterson and even Gustine, they weren't getting their share of the pie. And until you get lobbyists or people like yourself, Michael, to step out and negotiate, then nothing happens. It's just business as usual. And I just said all that to say to you, thank you for stepping out and, and, you know, taking care of your business in terms of the city of Newman.
Well, thank you. I mean, I, I did, again, I was a small part of the role. We had other city managers. But the one you really also need to thank is our supervisor Conde. He, he was a major player in this. And him getting elected to the board really helped jumpstart this and get this moving forward. So whether you're a council member or whether you're hearing this on home, if you, if you get an opportunity and you see Supervisor Conde, you make sure that you thank him for supporting our local cities on there.
Chad works very hard, you know, for the West Side and especially Newman. Appreciate him. That's all I have.
And I'll bring you back to council for action.
I'll, I'll move to adopt the resolution number 2022. The resolution authorizing the execution of the master property tax revenue agreement between the city of Newman and the county of Stanislaus.
And I'll second that.
All right, go ahead and vote. We have a first and a second. Motion carries three zero with one absent. I am number 11. Items from District 5, Stanislaus County Supervisor. He is not here tonight. But again, as Michael just mentioned, he was a big help with the tax sharing, getting that implemented. So we'd like to thank him and the other county supervisors that stepped up and helped with that. Item 12, items from city manager and staff. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to, again, echo your, your comment there. A big thank you to Supervisor Conde. And so with the council's permission, I'd like to prepare a letter thanking the board on behalf of the council and the community and send that off to them as we send this off and really just let them know that we appreciate them coming to the table and negotiating in good faith and stepping forward and helping the local cities. I think they realize, too, is by doing this agreement, more money not only stays in Newman, but stays in Stanislaus County as well. So.
Absolutely.
With that, with your permission, I'm going to go ahead and follow up with that. And I'll follow up with a letter to, to each of the board members over there as well, so.
Absolutely.
We, we agree with you, Michael.
Couple updates. At your previous meeting, you had approved a contract with EPS to update our impact fee program. So as, as things develop in community, in our community, whether it's a new house or a business, there's impacts on police department, fire department, or roads, everything. So there's an impact fee process. You have to do a study, what's called an nexus study, showing that there is a tie, there's a correlation between what's being built and what you're charging. So we're doing the kickoff on that tomorrow. Today, you approved a contract with Mr. George Osner. Mr. George Osner, as his report, helped us with our Northwest Newman Master Plan. We have a large developer on the opposite side now that's interested in having some discussions and possibly moving forward with an annexation. We'd like to bring him on board to help us maneuver through that process. He's got a ton of experience. And the developer will pay 100% of the freight. He'll pay the full cost of having George on our staff, so. And it'll be time material. Whatever George does for that project, he'll get charged for it. Otherwise, we won't use him on that. And then, just wanted to say that we finished up on our farmers' markets with a great success. I wanted to thank the Newman Chamber of Commerce, who were, who were out there with Ally and Miss Susan Barelli. And I want to thank Ally and... years ago, when we started that, we were only on the one little side of the parking lot there, maybe ten or twelve booths, you know, there are times now, we have fifty booths out there. And so, it's really, it's really turned into a community event, and it's through their hard work and dedication. And so, we look forward to the farmers' market and coming back in the fall. We'll have a fall market on there as well, and, you know, the vendors love to come back. Unfortunately, the last couple, there were some hot days there that really, really impacted the vendors, and so, there was a couple times the crowd wasn't as strong, but again, big thanks to them. And then, just lastly, I wanted to wish you all a happy Fourth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is Ally's not here today? I didn't see her.
No, Ally today.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank her real quick, since we're on her, for her effort in that, she's done a great job continuing that and building that, and I saw her advertising already for the Fall Festival for, for booths, so, great job in that. With that, we'll move to Lieutenant, Lieutenant Short, good evening.
Evening, Mayor, council members. I have nothing to share with you tonight on behalf of the police department, but I can answer any questions that you may have of me.
Thank you for coming. Lou?
I don't have anything to report either.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Catherine?
Just happy Fourth of July.
Outstanding.
And that's all I've got, but I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Well, there we go.
Do you have any fireworks?
I do not have any fireworks. I'll just be watching the illegal shows that are going on out there in the country.
Thank you, Catherine. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, council. A few things, Fourth of July, we have increased our staffing at the fire department, so we'll be out and about, working with Newman PD on any enforcement we may need to do for illegal fireworks. Just remind people, if you do call, don't dial nine-one-one, call the non-emergency number, give the best description you can, and we'll make our way over there. We do have a fire to the north of us, I don't know if you guys have heard of it, off of Beckwith, so it may produce some drift smoke that's gonna head into town. We're not aware of anything burning, I did get a couple calls this morning about it. We did have a crew out there till about five AM this morning, so they got a lot of resources committed, and it's in a dry river bottom, so it's kind of difficult to get to, so those will burn for quite some time. Fireworks booths opened at noon today, so you can go out, support your local nonprofit. We got four booths in town, you get to pick. And then, we just finished up on the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan for the city, so our annex was included. Thank you to Catherine and Justin for assisting me with that and getting that plan off. So, me and Councilmember Ball will attend our meeting at the end of this month to get that approved and get it to you guys to see, so. And then, we got to partake in the movie night on Saturday, it was kind of, kind of slow, but it was fun to be out there, we had the fire engine out there, showed a couple of the young ones around, so a good time. I think maybe the heat scared some people away, but it wasn't bad once the sun went down, so, other than that, I can answer any questions anyone might have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Councilman McDonald?
Just want to say, be safe and happy Fourth of July. No illegal fireworks.
I, I really don't have anything other than be safe. We just hope we don't get any bad fires in this town for Fourth of July. So far, we've been lucky.
We've been blessed, really blessed.
Good news. Well, you guys will be busy, so we appreciate you guys' hard work, be safe, fire and police, thank you, guys. And with that, happy birthday to our country, great country, so happy Fourth of July to everybody, and with that, I'll ask for an adjournment.
I'll second that.
I'll move, I'll third.
First and second.
Second it.
You need adjourn, thank you, guys.